Well, in that event, I will go ahead and call this meeting to order for our policy January 23rd, 2023 meeting. Thank you all for being here. I'll first take a motion to approve the agenda.
I move Madam Chairman to approve the agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Second discussion.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to add Policy 2302, Remote Participation in Board Meetings.
Okay, would you like to add that after personnel files?
We can, or we can, wherever, I mean, if we want to go in numerical order, but actually 2230 is out of order, so it doesn't matter. Put it where you want. I just don't want to run out of time.
Okay. Personnel files, so we can add that to the agenda. Do I hear a second? After personnel, after personnel files. So Policy 2302. I'd also like to add to the agenda a closed session for no longer than 15 minutes prior to the discussion of Policy 3620. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? Okay. So we're going to have a closed session prior to extracurricular activities, again, for no longer than 15 minutes. And I'm just making my notes here. And then I put on there committee meeting dates and consistency. I know this is not our standard time that we meet, and so I just want to acknowledge and thank everyone for being here today because I know there's a lot of gears in turn in motion with this. So after discussion, I know that we typically meet the second Tuesday of the month, and I wanted to kind of hear from the committee if that's something we can continue to do, but potentially at a later time, I'm going to suggest around 10:00 a.m. If there's any discussion with that.
Yeah, I did the, did you have any idea on the timing, like one hour, two hours, three hours? I mean, I don't really think we need a three-hour meeting, and we really have not even been using two hours for the past couple meetings because we've got the whole manual adopted. So, you know, I think we need to decide what our, what our, what our parameters are, just so, we can always end early, but it's, it's, I mean, unprofessional to end late on that.
I mean, I would suggest a two-hour meeting, and I'll, I've been to hear back from everybody. That's been part of it. Again, with the, hopefully the intent to end early, but the acknowledgement that to block off that time, to respect everyone's time from 10:00 to noon typically on the second Tuesday. If that's.
So Dr. Fauston team, is that, is Tuesday at 10:00? Does that work into the big scheme of things? It's kind of basically where we always have done it.
Oh, yeah, we're always, and it's already blocked off.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that okay with the folks sitting over there? Ten? Okay.
Okay. Ms. Bradford, does that work for you?
Yes.
And Ms. Crable, does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay, so then as we move forward, we'll consistently meet the second Tuesday at 10:00 a.m., otherwise needed. So the first policy that I.
Ms. Barron, while we're in that, so since we didn't have that already decided for the next board meeting coming up, which is February 7th, are we still going to have the items that we've talked about here on that board meeting? We typically have at least three to four weeks for the public to, and staff and everybody to weigh in. So is that, normally that's what, and that going forward, that will happen, but I'm just wondering how we want to approach.
These ones were sent back to committee, and I sent, I personally sent most of them back, so we've had a lot of time for public input and discussion. So I believe that moving forward, we'll do the will of the policy committee to whether or not it gets presented to the board or gets moved to the following policy meeting in February. That work for you?
Mm-hmm. What works? Which one? Move forward, February? Okay.
Just whatever comes out of this meeting to either move forward or to keep for the next policy meeting. But with the ones that have been called, they have been in discussion with policy. So that brings to the first policy.
Can we also just acknowledge our principal rep who's here with us today, Ms. Richard Fortan, Assistant Principal of College Park Elementary. So thank you for being with us as a representative from NC Papa, or local Papa.
Thank you for having me.
Yes, thank you for being here. So as we do our first order of business in 3300, I'm pulling it up on my tab, I had sent this back to the policy committee. So there, in the time of sending it back in December to now, there's been a couple of things that I wanted to add and kind of get the will of the committee prior to addressing. So the first thing that, and I can see here, the draft, the first thing I wanted to add is in Section A, Paragraph One, it talks about instructional day for changing classes, homeroom lunch, and I included the words recess in there, as well as pep rallies and similar non-instruction. So that would be the first thing that I wanted to avoid address because that became a conversation as far as whether or not recess should be indeed instructional or non-instructional. And so that was not specifically addressed in our.
So what we got in writing doesn't have that. So is that, is this what you're showing on?
Yeah, it does. I, I pulled this up from the draft agendas, and I'm, I'm sorry, going back and forth with emails. I know sometimes the latest one might not have been updated, but just for our reference, looking at what is attached into the agenda meeting, that's what we're going off of, and then we can make notes of discussion as needed. And so I'll give some time to pull that up, just so we're all on the same page of. Because I think.
Fourth sentence.
Item A. Yes. So is there an agreement to add that language to this?
Do you need a motion to do that?
No, you don't need a motion. We just, I just want to make sure that we're all talking off the same document.
Agreed.
And what I read, you know, in preparation.
Was slightly different.
Was slightly different. So that's, I'm just trying to avoid that happening in the future.
Do you want to go through this item by item, or do you want the whole thing?
We can, I'm looking at, I'm looking at the document that we can see up here. So if there's anything that is jumping out at you guys, I'd love to have the feedback and conversation now so that when this gets presented to the board.
Madam Chair.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Bradford.
Item B, School Calendar, The Requirements of GS 115C-842. Can anyone help me with what that is?
Basically, it's the calendar law.
Okay.
Please correct me if I'm wrong.
I thought so. Thank you.
And that is not really a change. I know there was some conversation with the public about whether or not we should abide by the law. In the old language, it addressed following the laws to the full extent, and I think this one just clarifies. And so, again.
One more question.
Committee members.
The last paragraph that is struck about the calendar committee. Okay, I see it. Here's the, here's the replacement language. It wasn't on this.
So scrolling down to the second page, this was the other language. And Ms. Crable?
No, I'm just, I am just trying to find it.
Okay.
So I could, my mouse isn't working, and I'm not a good scroller. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
So, yeah, the. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong thing. Okay, so we've just got to have, Crystal, could you go back up to the top again so I can look? I need to bring batteries. Okay. Keep going.
In Paragraph A.
Yeah. So you, so the only thing that you've added in there from what we got in our handouts is after pep rallies, we have, no, before pep rallies, we have recess.
Yes, ma'am.
And so are we, we've had a lot of discussion on structured versus unstructured, so I want to be clear on what your intent was. Because all these are your changes, right? These ones in red are your changes?
This, a bulk of it was what was up for discussion back at the December board meeting to be approved. And so looking over it, that one word in Paragraph A is indeed my change to address breaks in instructional day. So I take that as, addressing it as a break in the instructional day means that it is non-instruction time. And so if I'm misinterpreting what my, what my desire is, then I'd love feedback on that, but that is the premise of adding that, so that it's specifically not instruction.
Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Right after that, it says, "And similar non-instructional activities," implying that recess is a non-instructional activity. So it's pretty clear.
Yes, so that was the intent.
We don't want to spell that out, given the conversation that we've had, because it's going to come up again in the calendar when we're discussing.
I would love if you have different language that you'd like to offer for that. I'd love for you to say what you think would be more clear, because that's what I attempted to do at here.
I would say unstructured recess. And recess in and of itself, to me, implies that it's recess and free time. But apparently there has been, not apparently, there has been discussion on unstructured versus structured.
So.
And so I don't think that we should go with it's obvious.
Okay.
If somebody's asking a question, then it's not obvious.
It says breaks in the instructional day, breaks in the instructional day for changing classes, list some things, it says recess, then it says pep rallies, and similar non-instructional activities. Breaks in the instructional day and non-instructional activities are both in that same sentence.
Okay, I'm good with it, but just be prepared that it's gonna, it's gonna come up again when we talk about calendar.
So your suggestion is just to have unstructured recess as the language change right there?
Yeah.
I would be okay with that. Ms. Bradford, are you okay with just adding unstructured recess? And then scrolling down to the very bottom.
Can I ask a question of the folks who are in charge of this, like Dr. Basin? Is that an appropriate ad, or is that not an appropriate ad? Because I don't want to contradict the work that your group, that your department is doing.
My question would be, then are we gonna lay out what is structured recess? So I, that's, I get a question. I, I don't, honestly, I think it's fine because, but the next question is gonna be what is structured recess? So that brings that up, and I, I wonder if we want to answer that here or not. Not clear about that.
Do you want to just leave it out? I mean, I don't, I don't, I am only trying to clear up confusion that's coming.
Yeah.
But I also am deferring to you as the subject matter expert, and this is the work that you do. So the, what's, what's your thoughts?
I, I think, I think your point is taken well, because we still might get back and people say, well, what about structured recess? But I just want Miss Body to know, if you include it either way, or not include it, if you include the word unstructured, we would have to define what, I mean, structured, what is structured recess? So I don't know. I think, either way, I think structured recess would become a question, and what is the definition that we have for it?
Yes, Ms. Bradford.
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt Policy 3300 as it's written.
I'm not done making comments yet. Ms. Bradford.
Okay.
The, if I can just call point of order, what we normally do, Josie, is anybody that has a, has a question about it, they're asked for their feedback. So the invitation is extended to everybody. Does anybody have any comments on it before we move to move it on?
At, I mean, at this time, I, I wanted to address my other addition for that. If there is a question, did you have a question?
Yes.
Other question?
The, so moving down into Paragraph Two A, "A proposal for alternating schedule of classes or other such schedules may be part of a school improvement plan." So is that a may, or should that be a should, or? Dr. Basin?
This is Jason. Can, can you all hear me, committee members?
Yes, Jason. Hello.
The, can you hear me? This, this is Jason, the, the board attorney for anyone listening. The word "may" there is consistent with statute, where schools may include alternative scheduling as part of the improvement plans that they present to you, the board. So, so the way it's written now tracks the statute.
Can I just, the question that was asked of me, Jason, with the recess and instructor, could you please address that? I'm sorry, I, I forgot you were on the line.
No, that's fine. So in the section above, where there's a proposal to add recess to the list of non-instructional activities, I mean, in my view, as the board's attorney, I think it's pretty clear. You know, adding the word structured or unstructured in front of recess opens it up to interpretation, which if that's the will of the committee, that's, that's fine. You know, if you want to introduce that, then leave it up to staff to further define, you know, what that is. As it's written now, recess is clearly considered, or would clearly be considered, a non-instructional activity that would not count for purposes of instructional hour calculations. And I think just the general term recess is also clear enough. I mean, it would, whether it's structured or unstructured, the way it's written, it would not count.
So then it seems like feedback from Mr. Weber to keep the, just, just plain recess, not adding the caveat of unstructured or structured. So I would recommend just to keep it as recessed, as edited.
I'm good with that.
Okay. Are you okay with that, Ms. Bradford? And as we, as we move down to page two.
Well, I needed to have my question addressed in, in Paragraph Two.
He said that was consistent with general statutes.
What, may versus should? Okay.
And so as we scroll down to page two, waivers for opening, I added in the last paragraph, "In the event the committee feels as though they are unable to provide the best academic development for students in New Hanover County schools, they request the board consider adopting a resolution to be presented to public and elected officials."
Where is that? Underneath the strike through at the very end. It takes a minute to find it, actually.
Oh, I had a strike through.
Oh, it's, you gotta get it off the border, you gotta get it off here. It's new from the agenda.
This is, this is the one that was uploaded to the agenda, so.
A little bit of red above the black.
But I, I'm open to feedback at this time with this, because I know the board, that's what the board did. I just wanted to outline steps for in the event that we have an issue with our community, that the board can take an outward action step to address the concerns of our committee, but also still be abiding by law. So if there's different verbiage that we feel we need to add with that.
Yes, sir. I, was it paragraph one waiver for opening or closing?
No, it's at the very end, and I, I took this.
It's not on the printed page, Dr. Faust.
Okay.
You gotta get it there, or you gotta get it.
Yeah, I'm sorry for the discrepancy between that, but this is, this is from, the, all of the documents that we're going to be discussing is straight from the uploaded agenda. And so when you're looking at that, that is what you see here. So I put, placed it after Section B, number two, I placed it at the very last paragraph.
So Madam Chair, just a point of clarification.
Yes.
The strike through is going away and is being replaced with the verbiage you provided? Or is the verbiage you provided in addition to the information that's structured? Because it's different information. One describes the composition of the calendar committee, what it shall do and what it shall be composed of or comprised of. And then the item that you add is in addition to that. So I'm wondering, the strike through, does it go away completely?
I think this was, that was something that was struck through prior to me making my edit. So I, let me look to see. I thought, when I looked it over, that that sentence was replaced somewhere else. So let me look just.
It is, Madam Chair.
Okay.
But it, but it's also has a strike through again. It's, it's on the first page.
There should not happen a double strike through. So that, that was an oversight.
Well, it's got some changes in it. It's, um, school calendar, strike through C, now B. It's up there. I think it's the same thing rewritten, think. I'm pretty sure it is.
The calendar committee will address school calendars for the standing school year to be presented for board approval. Any calendar adopted by the board will be consistent with the requirements of General Statute 115C. Okay, so that, that's where the consistency.
Yeah. It's just replacing the location.
It, okay.
Mr. Weber, do we even need what she wrote? I, I am having a little bit of heartburn here with adding into our policies always that we can, we'll, we'll draft resolutions, because we, if we believe it, then we say it. So I, do we, do we need that? Is that contradictory to the work that we're doing?
Well, I wouldn't say it's contradictory. So this, this language, proposed new language at the end of the policy that's in the red text, you know, that would require, it would create a new requirement for the calendar committee in that, you know, they feel like they don't have any good options. They will request the board consider adopting a resolution. I mean, even without that language, the board at any time can adopt a resolution, present it to public and elected officials. What this is doing is directing the calendar committee to make that request, if they are for some reason unhappy with the options that they have. And, and again, with or without it, the committee could always do that, you know, on their own. But if the board, or this committee of the board wanted to make that a specific requirement or obligation, then that's what this language would do.
Well, I guess.
It doesn't, it doesn't bind the board to doing anything. It binds the calendar committee to making a request.
Okay. So I guess I'm reading through, and it says that the, that the, the calendar committee is only an advisory committee. So I guess what this is saying is the calendar, you want the calendar committee to request of the board to do resolutions, rather than the board saying, let's do a resolution on our own. I'm just feeling like we're putting a little too much responsibility on the calendar committee, that, because if you look at what we have asked them to do, or when we look at what the, which we'll get to in board in the 2310, the, the calendar committee is an advisory committee that, whose purpose is to create calendars and solicit input. It doesn't say in here that their purpose is to recommend extraneous activity, you know, to the board.
We, so is, do you hear a motion just to strike that from the policy?
Well, it's not a motion, it's a suggestion. Because right now, we're not moving anything. We're just talking about the wording, and do we want it or not? Because at the, after we finish this policy, we will not make a motion. We will say, we will put it into one of our categories that says we'll adopt it as amended, or with the wording exactly, or we will adopt it with some minor changes that we will review with legal, or we're going to hold it in case.
The reason for this addition was because the two calendars that the calendar committee wanted to present to the board, one intentionally broke the law because they felt it was in the best interest of students. So rather than a caveat to talk to the board, an open dialogue to say, here's where we're at, we are stuck with this calendar law that we feel is very hard to get around and not in the best interest of students. As a board, we decided to adopt a resolution, which passed most recently. But we were first presented with two options, the board was, to either break the law or to do a traditional calendar A. And so that, that is where the premise of this, if we feel like it's in the best interest, I'm looking at my counterparts, to not put that in there, I'm okay with taking it out. But that was my reason and justification behind it, because I don't want to feel like our committees feel like they have to make a decision that is not in the best interest of students. And I felt like this tried to outline another avenue that they could utilize in requesting. That was my intent.
I don't, I personally don't think we need it.
Ms. Bradford?
I'm neutral. It can stay, it can go.
Well, we have to decide.
I know.
I have the wrong one.
I have the wrong.
I didn't bring my computer.
It's really hard for me to, like, follow along, I know.
Crystal's printing more.
I was gonna say, maybe we can figure out some. I mean, in the event to continue to pass this through, the big, those were the two biggest changes for me, to add the recess and to utilize.
Do you want to change will to may? And then it would be more palatable. If you change the will right here to may, they may request, and then it's just as benign as it can be. It's not threatening in any way.
I'm just feeling that that is not the job of the calendar committee, because all we ask them to do is put together some suggestions. And they did, they gave us two. And so it's up to us to pick. And then it's also up to us to say, we don't like those, or we do like them, but we want to do a resolution. I, I'm just thinking that, thank you.
It's not needed.
I'm just thinking that we don't need to, just like we don't need to get into the structured versus unstructured recess, which I'm completely okay with, I don't think we need to add that other layer, you know, to, and we would have to change Policy 23, the, the agenda. I don't think we need to add that other layer, you know, to, and we would have to change policy 23, the, the agenda, or the, the description of policy 2230, that we're asking the calendar committee to do that.
Well, we can go, if we, if that's the, well, we can just strike that last paragraph and continue forward with the changes that we see in red, including adding that recess.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. Can you just show me where, who, I don't see who is chairing the committee and who's on the committee. Both times on my document, it's marked out.
I think that's in 2310.
What we did, Dr. Faeser, is we struck, when we, when we have reviewed this back in the fall, we struck that out of this policy because we addressed it specifically in 2230. So that is where we, that brings me right to one of my next suggestions, was in the first line where it says the calendar committee will draft school calendars. The, I wanted to add, the board advisory calendar committee, as described in policy 2230, the, will develop the calendars. Because that, and that, we did that so that we wouldn't have to go back and forth.
So the language you want to suggest is in B, school calendar, the board advisory calendar committee will draft school calendars.
I would, I would like to even say, as described in policy 2230. Even though we do, we do reference it in the cross-references at the end, this, to clear up that point specifically, so folks don't get confused, that we're, that we, we are already addressing it someplace else.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't see.
No, that's okay.
I'm okay with that.
That's, I'm, I'm okay with that suggestion as well. So after that discussion, is there any other discussion or feedback for the purpose of this policy?
The, when we're coming down to B, number two, the, do we, in the, the sentence, that is the second sentence, the superintendent and individuals are encouraged to obtain input from teachers and other personnel, as well from the community, in developing proposals for modifying. I would say we need to insert the traditional school calendar to, and then you have to year, to year round, but add to A, year round calendar, so that we're clear on what we're converting.
For modi, so you want the language to read, for modifying the traditional school calendar to year round calendar?
To a year round calendar.
Have the word traditional.
Committee members, so the, the calendar law does not use the term traditional school calendar. There actually are modified school calendars. They're limited to calendars that were adopted prior to, I think, 2004. And I don't know if that applies in new Hanover County schools. But if you did have any modified calendar schools, then changing this to put traditional in front of school calendar would limit the ability to switch from just traditional school calendars to year round as opposed to modified school calendars.
Okay, so we shouldn't put that in there?
So I, I would recommend leaving it as it is, open-ended with school calendar.
Okay, so in the first sentence of that same paragraph, traditional school calendar is, is written there. So should we take it out there as well?
I would recommend taking that out, too.
I would agree with that recommendation.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
So it says, for modifying a school's school calendar. Do we, because you put in schools, do we even need that, schools?
Again, that was.
That change is from the School Boards Association.
The school board, yeah.
It's part of the updates, I think, from the fall.
The us schools was from the.
Yes.
Okay.
So you can, it's gonna just say, a school's calendar to a year round calendar.
And then, so my last question was, the last sentence of number two is, a year round school may be include, may be included as part of a school improvement plan. Why did we write that?
Because.
We not made, like, shouldn't it be included, or?
Well, no, not necessarily, because I don't know why the person wrote it, but if, well, let's say if we were thinking that year round would be part of what we do to increase a school, because we have the students in going year round. It's the thought, I'm thinking that someone inserted that in. But we don't have to, yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Does that make sense? So maybe if we change, maybe some of our schools that are year round, but no, they're not our schools that are year round. But if a school is in going through improvement, like our restart schools, to maybe include the aspect of students being in school year round as part of improving those schools, is why I'm thinking this is here, but I, that's my thought process.
Do you have any thoughts on leaving that in?
I think we should take it out.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
The reason why, the research states that it doesn't, there's a technical difference. It comes, they'd have to, they would have to give more school days versus your regular traditional. But if you're doing the same, it's just the breaks are, they're put in there at different times. So I would.
So to strike that last sentence?
I would have to say, right, that if you're a school improvement, you don't necessarily need that for you.
That's.
Our year rounds, as Dr. Faeser was saying, our year round schools are not performing.
Right.
Okay. So we'll strike that last, is that, is everybody good with that?
Yes.
So then I move that we adopt this policy as amended to be presented at the February board meeting.
So we, we normally do the whole movement at the end, so.
I think we're gonna have a lot more discussion.
I know, but I'm writing them down on, on our tally sheet. So this would be the existing policies for amendment. Are we, we are sending them forward as, as, as written here. We're not holding it out.
Correct, so 3310, I'm making the motion to move it forward to present to the board. So I'm all in favor for that. I'm gonna say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
But we normally vote on all of them at the end.
I, I, we're gonna, I think, I mean, even just with the time discussion, I'd like to make sure that we have a clear path moving forward for each of these individual ones. And so I am going to make a motion that we enter closed session pursuant to North Carolina general statute 143-318.11a3 to consult with the board's attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege. With time constraints, I want to see no more than 15 minutes, but hopefully it'll be shorter than that, so. Do I have a second? All right. And we are now in closed session.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So now we're in closed session. So. Let's do it.
Just retype those. Thank you so much. Sorry for the confusion. All right.
I have that for a second, but did we also strike that last? What was said to me was, did they decide to take that out? Is what it sounded like?
I thought we had left it. I thought we left that in.
Did they leave this in or take it out after all that discussion?
Thank you for being here.
I think, I think they said.
Sorry for the 15 emails. Because I, I thought we were, that was everybody was.
All your emails were correctly trashed for me, so. I think they changed the word.
Oh, like may, may. So they went in and they changed that to may. Oh, what do we, hi, how are you?
I'm gonna feel bad this morning. You know, doing a little weightlifting.
Yeah, so it'll go to the board in February for actual approval. But it's moving forward.
Oh, wow. I did, I saw stars.
I was scared.
Yeah, my chiropractor said, oh, yeah, that's happened to me two or three times.
Okay.
Good for you.
Yes. They took that out. It didn't seem to fit, did it?
Right.
You got your mind's words out of it.
They took this out, too.
Okay.
I think that was, those were the only changes. They went back and forth, and I think they've been the only changes.
Thank you. I'm sorry. I think it's hard with my hearing and hearing tube, because somebody looks like something's broken.
Yeah. The room isn't set up really good for acoustic. I want to get my coffee, fix my appetite up.
I mean, not to the greatest, I mean, pretty good.
I can check my stomach.
I do it all the time. I do it all the time.
Could that be the first meeting of it by the board in February?
Yes. Since it's power of the board policy committee, and then the board's in that policy committee, it might only go once, like, it might not have a second meeting, if that makes sense. They don't have an option, they don't have, but they could redefend it and take it.
Did everybody have chips and lunch for me? I actually brought lunch, too. I actually brought lunch, I had some leftover spaghetti. We have some.
I, I, I'm sure that it was disgusting, right, but Jango's truck through, I got three chicken strips.
Hey, did you see that email?
I like those chicken strips.
Okay, I hadn't read that.
Not good for you, but not disgusting.
Because he, 12 months, because normally central office people are 12 months. Schools. People are exempt people, so they're exempt, so, I mean, maybe I'm missing something. Like, I work 10 hours, but my schedule hours are eight. Mm-hmm. Oh, I see what you're saying. When we should, when they were absent, she used seven and a half. And I think when I spoke with her, I said, I wouldn't, I wouldn't worry about that. I was good. Okay, yeah, she added it after. Yep, I'll be glad to do that.
The E-Attorney.
That's where she's going about it. Okay, very good, thank you. But there are so many things, you know, I just don't wanna get things confused.
We decided, that's what I, that's what I told them, I just wanted to make sure.
Gubens. They've got to make that connection to a school.
Right. Expect them to be there. You can't just say, hey, you're done here. Good luck when you go to high school.
I don't know, it's like we have to feel. And they're exempt, so they work till the jobs.
Me, it's, I don't know.
I don't know if it takes them seven or eight.
Whatever you want. You gotta make sure the case.
Oh, I know, I know. I have this. Don't, a recreational activity. Can I remember, I mean, this is, this is, I just think back and figure out. Yeah.
It's a serious.
And if we're working hours, and that was a part of our day-to-day, we're doing hours, we're doing hours. Because when it's a day-to-day, it doesn't matter.
So we gotta make sure. I know. I know. I don't know. Anyway, I just wanted to be sure, because.
Yeah, definitely, they can, they can be returned, but they need to be returned as you're best.
Yeah. I need to ask the children, too.
Yeah, whatever that, like, your point of time, left days, and you went hours, whatever you were in crew in time at that time, that's how everything got converted.
Okay, I'm gonna send you, I'm gonna look for her. In camp, see if I can get my head on that, what's going on. Because that would help our students greatly. Our thing really, that would help them a lot.
Right.
And the teachers, I think, would, would put a burden on them, you know? I think they'll be fine with it. I'll take a little bit of it.
There you go, that's what most people try to do. Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah. And, and up front, like, to up front lead, too, that they'll earn for the end of the year. And there, those people that, I mean, it's different if they don't earn it. Right. Mm-hmm, right. Yeah. Is that for all? Mm-hmm. Yeah. Sure, yeah, does it bother you? Oh, yeah, mine do, yeah, I have parents that do that, too, yeah. Yeah, that drives them crazy, yeah. Yeah, I, my parents, when I first found them, yeah, they, yeah.
When you first get it?
Yeah. So they look pretty. And they're still so, and they're still. They want, all their merch in their pockets, they're still so shut. Oh, my gosh. Wow. Yeah, sometimes you, you can get some good views on there.
So that also, I think it has to be in a sexist, if they sell more pockets shit, that also.
I need, I need the pockets.
Why do you, do you, do you think?
I mean, and it's not, yeah, it's not a tie, so, you know.
Maybe that's cause, maybe it's because they know guys won't take the time to.
They're cute.
That's all I should have driven, I didn't know if maybe the, the, the.
Yeah. Okay, that's what I thought, so. And that's primary.
That was really important, we hold, I mean, I've seen the, the.
Okay, from today. Thank you. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Of course, these days, she, she, she's been trying to get that, but. It hasn't, it's just. So, I just want. Yeah, 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 but I, I can, um, I wanna, I told you, don't know, I would love to know what other districts are doing, I miss the attention, we think about.
So they can just make them excuse.
What's the finding? Yeah. Mm-hmm. So, I seem to. Um, does that normally happen? Yeah, sometimes you get the.
Maybe it's just the printer settings? Discuss, where you're going, it can be that. They get, it's really, everybody coming in and talking about it for forty-five minutes. No, it can be, here, kid, here, I'm in any way that they even have the credit, it, it, teachers, it's one of those things. There was a group, a top place, we got a whole. Not only the. Some that get excused.
Right.
I think it makes.
You know what?
They want to make.
Includes, but they've lost on. So the one I have off. Okay, that's why I can't see it, okay, cause it's red, okay, cause it's a black and white, okay.
No, no, no.
Gotcha.
But it's. Crossing out, yeah.
Yeah.
So they made it. And this was the turn, they wanted to choose, and they wanted to say, cause we were going from Noah's and.
Okay, so that is correct.
Anyone curious why this is? You know?
Okay.
I'm okay, it's like.
Are you willing to share?
Oh, I do. I've called the ones that, that. They saw, I see your, well, your schemes, and I'm like, well, maybe we should have. Why are we waiting till the end of the night?
Do you want thirty-six to?
So, I mean.
And can you scroll to page two, please?
I would be fine with it.
Okay, keep going. Okay, sorry, that, that's.
We get really unexcused days. I'd be fine with that, they felt like. Committee said, they felt like that was not a mistake, I think it's the same thing, cause I always say it differently, I already.
I, would you just say it though, makes sense, the committee said different, I just, I was just trying to think of, see if that's a double word.
And, and, as I said, it's maybe it's me.
Just saying, you know.
When I've been asked, like, and I was at Ashley's.
I'm sorry, mm-hmm.
They were like, oh, yeah, we, uh, we had so many, you know, that, we had three hundred or whatever, but more days, and I was like, well, which ones were you concerned about, they're all.
They were good.
Mm-hmm, yeah, they did.
Um, the next policy on the agenda is thirty-six twenty, and this was part, something that was brought up both by substantial changes from the NCSBA, as well as it was sent back from our board, and so to open discussion, I will consult Ms. Bradford to let her have her thoughts on that, and then we'll discuss further from everyone in the committee.
My concerns are safety, um, in watching the video of the young lady from September twenty twenty-two in Cherokee County, North Carolina, high school volleyball player who was injured by a volleyball spike to the head, um, the velocity was extremely abnormally fast, they estimated it was seventy miles an hour, and, um, she is still suffering neck and head injury problems, long-term concussion problems. Concussion is something that we're all aware of now in sports, and, um, the Cherokee County Board voted five to one in September to forfeit all girls volleyball games against the Highland School, um, quoting safety concerns, um, and the quotes that made it into the media by the members of that board really, really concern me, and if we're constantly weighing everything by lawsuits or no lawsuits, um, there's no question, it hasn't been filed today, but at some point, there will be a lawsuit, and they will name the board and everyone else they can possibly name for that girl's injuries. Um, I'm trying to head that off, we haven't had an issue, I'm trying to keep us from getting into that hot water, and I'm trying to make the policy more consistent with what exists for the next stage, the next four years in high school.
So, the.
Yes, Ms. Crable.
The, the, the team that you're talking about is high school, and the changes that we are proposing here are for eleven, twelve, and thirteen-year-olds.
Correct.
That probably do not have the strength and the, um, adolescent development that this high school player had. So I think we should be comparing apples to apples and not middle school to high school, just, if, if, if that is your number one concern, then I think that we need to look past that.
I appreciate your opinion, yeah.
And I will add to that, I, I, um, looking at the first, sorry, and we'll go through this, I guess, from the top bottom. So the first suggestion that I was looking at was on page two, excuse me, um, to must to should, and I know, um, after talking with some individuals, to, can, the consensus might be to keep it as should, so that we can maintain consistency versus must in allowing that participation piece, it says to participate in inters, interscholastic athletic contest, a student athlete should, and I had changes to should, but to keep the wording must be in attendance on the day, um, is it the will of the committee to keep must, or?
I think we should keep must for, if we're talking about consistency, then yes, and then our attendance policy, um, also addresses that, you know, so we, um, we need to be consistent on, like, suppose Stephanie says, oh, well, you know, I have this, so I don't have to, um, I'm allowed to play, but Josie says, oh, I had this excuse, and they're like, oh, you can't play, sorry.
So to keep as must, Ms. Bradford, do you have any feedback for that language, would you like to say that, see that stay as must, or allow it to be should?
I can go with should.
Um, and I don't know who the, um, consulting expert would be in this, but I would love to hear their, is, is that you, Dr. Ross?
Well, part of it.
Okay.
This one, we do have to call the North Carolina Athletics Association, there's language there, and I'm looking at Julie, because, um, we don't want to get outside of.
There's still.
Yes, because they are the ones who actually dictate the, um, the players, like, who can, and we don't want to have to forfeit because of something that we didn't have, so Julie, can you help us?
Yeah, um, with re, with regard to attendance, we have it stated in, um.
Forty-four hundred?
Yeah, I mean, hold on, I didn't have that pulled up in cross-reference.
I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. But it is an expectation, and that's a consistent expectation, um. Does the middle school manual address that? Um, no, the middle school manual, um, the state manual, is that the one you're talking about? The one, the one that, um, is referenced in our policy, the, um. Right, it just, it just aligns to district policy regarding attendance. Okay. Um. So we have school-related activities, um, I can come back to this and, and find it.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll keep forward discussion, and we can come back to that.
Okay.
Um, so I, I do have, what we see here for the middle school, which is, um, the biggest thing, as we discuss this, is a middle school student, and I have a slight, uh, language change that I'd like to add here that we're being, offering for consideration. It would, uh, it would be page two, and starting with a student participating in middle school athletics. It would read as follows, a student participating in middle school athletics may participate only on the team consistent with the gender on the student's birth certificate unless otherwise permitted under new Hanover County Schools Administrative Procedures. The administrative procedures shall be consistent with applicable North Carolina High School Athletic Association rules and regulations. Um, the justification for that, after consulting with a lot of individuals, is still allowing an opportunity, but providing consistency in what the expectation is, because irregardless of our personal opinions, there is a process in place come ninth grade to allow gender identification, um, as part of athletic participation, and so the concept is to mirror that, to help provide consistency for our students. And I, yes, yes.
So, um, and I know Ms. Barnum is, is busy looking up something else, but, um, I think it would behoove us now to make sure we hear out loud what that process looks like, it's, it's a very invasive, um, process and, um, that we go through with children, basically, who are fourteen through eighteen in high school. But this policy that we're talking about is addressing kids who are ten, eleven, or eleven, twelve, and thirteen-year-olds, so it, it's a pretty invasive policy. So it's a pretty invasive policy. And so before I can sign off on us, not policy, pretty invasive protocol, I think that we should all be clear on just what that means. Because the North Carolina High School Sports Association is an independent agency and we are a school district with different levels of resources and very different levels of expertise.
And I'm fine with openly discussing that. I will add to that. The concept here that's being discussed right now is a complete, just gender identification as stated by the individual middle school athletic. That is in semi-contradicting to what the High School Sports Association has in place. So I think in order to both acknowledge and to allow to define that process of accountability is due diligence on our part. And again, irregardless of our personal feelings, this is the process that is laid out for ninth grade. And so I have looked into this in depth and I can pull it up on the website. So is there something specific that you want to discuss the process for or?
Yeah, because it's my understanding that they have to be evaluated by a medical doctor and a psychologist, psychiatrist, who are experienced in dealing with transgender people, not just necessarily students, but transgender people. They have to interview the student's family, interview the student's friends, interview the student's teachers, and they all have to attest that this child, student, is identifying as the gender that they say they are. So in almost every, all of our curriculum, especially like, you know, in our counseling areas, we always talk about what is age appropriate. And I'm just putting out there that what is age appropriate for a high school student process is not necessarily age appropriate for pre-teens, pre-adolescents, in their whole frontal lobe development, in their whole body development, in their whole emotional, you know, development. So it's just a lot that we would put these kids through who all they want to do is just be with their friends and play and be accepted. They don't necessarily need to be under the scrutiny of our school system employees to say who you are is not good enough and you are not trans enough. So that is all I'm saying, is that the process is, it's very invasive and it's harsh for that. And when we're talking about eleven, twelve, and thirteen-year-old kids, we're not talking about kids who are trying to get scholarships and go on to compete in the Olympics. We're talking pretty much about babies still.
I hear and understand your sentiment. I would say again that irregardless of our feelings, this is the process that's in place. And so right now we are come at a crossroads to say, are we going to keep consistent that says a student in middle school can play with their gender identification period or to develop a process that mimics? So hearing the concern of constraints on the staff makes me think that you're saying either totally allow it or don't allow it at all. And this all or nothing approach is, I think, where the conversation peeps that really stops the conversations for people because I don't think people are trying to say all or nothing. I think it's, the conversation is, we have an opportunity to provide consistency and I understand the feelings of acceptance, but when we're looking at how we write policies, should we be saying we should do this with emotion-led feelings or trying to main consistency for our students? And so I'm trying to be respectful because I know we have a plethora of opinions on this topic, but that is where the justification is coming from.
So, and in the first line of B1, it says, in addition to meeting the general requirements listed above, to be eligible for interscholastic athletic participation, students must have the written permission of their parent or guardian and must meet all applicable eligibility standards of the State Board of Education. So the, a parent is probably not going to give permission for their transgender student to participate on a team that is inconsistent from what they have observed that their child is exhibiting. So the, I know that this board is very concerned about parental rights and parental involvement, and this one's clearly saying that parents are involved. So I can't imagine a parent setting their child up for that kind of failure.
Is there any other discussion that has not yet taken place from committee members who would like to speak on this topic?
Ms. Barnum, did I misstep or misspeak on the process?
No, so I'm trying to do the things at once real quick.
I'm sorry.
At the high school, there is the gender identity for the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, the Gender Identity Committee, and then the submission of all of the information, much of which you spoke about, to the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. I have gotten confirmation that there have been some requested this year and they've all been approved. So the information that you shared, I think, is accurate.
And you're talking about all been approved through high school, not through middle school? So I guess my point is, what does it hurt? What really does it hurt when we have a lot of, in middle school, we have a lot of co-ed sports that where girls and boys play together? And, you know, we don't ask them, you know, what are you? You know, are you male, are you female, are you trans, are you whatever? You know, so I'm just curious as to what does it hurt? As long as they are, and the language we had before was very clear that participating in middle school is not necessi, does not necessarily mean that you're going to be accepted by the High School Sports Association.
Any other feedback at this time?
No, thank you.
The, in letter B, number two, this is on a different topic, but it's in the, a different theme, but the one, two, third paragraph, I would like to strike the word scrimmage from the last line of that sentence, of the second sentence, to include only gay...
Letter two, you said, I'm sorry.
It's paragraph B, number one, one, two, third paragraph, to strike out the word scrimmage. We've already had to waive the policy one time this year because our policy is stricter than the North Carolina High School Sports Association. So if we remove scrimmage, then we're more in line with that.
I can't find it. Where are you?
Page two.
Letter B, number one, one, two, three paragraph, the very last word in the third paragraph, last two words, or scrimmage.
Okay. I would be okay with that.
I'm okay with that.
Ms. Barnum, I know that you're doing double duty here, so were you able to look up the verbiage change between must or should to see that most accurately reflects?
On the day of the contest?
Yes.
It's recommended that, so in the High School Athletic Association information, it states that it is recommended with an underline that the student be in school the day of the contest.
So then it comes to the question, do we want to maintain consistency and say recommended in attendance? Two.
I don't. I think we're setting ourselves up for just more controversy by we either, you have to be here or you don't have to be here. And we have all kinds of, you know, caveats in our attendance policy that allow for what's an excused absence. Like if you're on a field trip and, you know, your candidate is there, you can still come back and play. You know, if you had to be excused to go to a doctor's appointment, you know, there's all those things that are already in our attendance policy. So if we change this, then we're going to have to change our attendance policy or we're going to, we're going to be looking at our attendance policy for consistency.
So to keep it as must? I'm okay with keeping it as must. I'm okay with scratching through the or scrimmage in that third paragraph, and I make a motion that...
Would you repeat your wording again, please?
I'm sorry, for the middle school?
For the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph?
Yes, it would be, a student participating in middle school athletics may participate only on the team consistent with the gender on the student's birth certificate unless otherwise permitted by new Hanover County Schools Administrative Procedures. The administrative procedures shall be consistent with applicable North Carolina's High Schools Athletic Association rules and regulations.
Second.
Okay, so one last question for that, and that would be to Dr. Faust and his team, the folks that are responsible for the thirty-six hundred series. So if we were to adopt this right here, right now, how, I mean, obviously, we're in spring sports, so this would not affect any of our students.
At this time.
At this time. So similar to what we did with other policies where we say it goes into effect for school year twenty-three, twenty-four, I would like to see some wording about that because it is going to take that end of the table and this end of the table and probably all the ends of the table. It's going to take, you know, some work on getting these procedures in place that are, that can be upheld, you know, that will not violate any Title IX policies or law. So I would like to have some words in there to say that this goes into, that it goes into effect for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year to give us time because I have a real hard time having a policy in place knowing that we are not able to meet it.
What would the difference be with this wording now and having that? Because like you said, the students who are already participating in athletics would have that time. So this is a precedent moving forward that our staff would be having to prepare for.
You still have baseball, softball, track.
They haven't had their tryouts, is what you're saying?
Yeah.
And we do have three middle school students that participate, that use this part of the policy to participate in accordance with their gender identity.
Already?
Yes.
Yeah, so we, yeah, and so, and nobody knows that, nobody's talked about that, and I just, that's, again, comes back to my point, who cares? You know, it's just not really been an issue. But I would like for it to be real specific that we, because otherwise, if we adopt this policy today and that's not in there, then those students that we already have, we're going to have to start doing something. We're going to have to put them through the wringer to maintain their spot on the team, right? I mean, if we're, Jason, would that, does that make sense?
I mean, I think the committee has some discretion here. If you want to build into this proposed new language, a start date, for example, you could start the new sentence with, beginning with the twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four school year. You could certainly do that, you know, as part of the motion. Whoever makes it could, you know, make it with the understanding that it will be effective beginning the twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four school year. It just depends on how you want to do it.
So I would like to modify, make a motion to modify Ms. Bradford's motion. This is why we don't motion in the middle of a discussion, we wait until the end. But I would like to make a motion that, to add the words, beginning with school year twenty-three, twenty-four, comma, a student, blah, 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 blah.
Point of order, Ms. Madam Chairman, I didn't make the motion.
Whoever made the motion? Was that you?
Yeah, so the motion on the table...
I modified Ms. Barnhart's motion.
So you want to amend the motion to say?
Beginning with school year twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four, comma, a student participating in middle school athletics. All the words that you said. Because I don't think that we're prepared, and if we've got students that this involves right here, right now, technically, we're going to have to go yank them off the team until they pass this process that we don't even have. How's that going to look?
Well, I mean, I'll be very direct here. I was not in favor of the old board passing this policy as is, and I brought some accountability issues when this, when this was proposed change, just as a parent. So it is a frustrating thing to be here to make that decision right here, right now because I don't think that it provides consistency and fairness. So with this in place, I hear what you're saying. And either way, whether we adopt it immediately or come the twenty-two-three, twenty-four school year, the process will be in place. So it becomes, do they have to do the process now or do they have to do the process in the fall, starting in the fall? Ms. Bradford, what do you think with that amendment?
I'm content with the motion that you made and it's been seconded.
So the, on the table right now is, I'm hearing that nobody is going to second my amended motion. Okay, that's fine. Mr. Weber, can I ask the question? If we adopt this, well, actually, we're not going to adopt it now, we will adopt it on February seventh, perhaps. That, and there won't be any technicalities, you know, everybody will be there, we will do everything the way we're supposed to do it. The, do we have to remove those students that are playing the sports right now? If we adopt the policy?
Well, I would say that, you know, this proposal is a proposal from the committee to the full board. And, you know, at that time, any member could propose an amendment to add some clarity around the effective date. And if not, then it would be a matter of interpretation that I'd be happy to discuss with staff.
Okay, thank you.
So the motion on the second, so now we'll call for a vote to whether or not this gets moved forward to the February board meeting. I am in favor.
I...
Policy forward.
Not in favor.
Okay, so that's going to pass for two to one. We move on to surveying students, forty-seven twenty. I'm going to pull this up.
So I was really confused on all of the strikeouts in blues and moving arounds. So I think we're going to have to kind of go through some of the thought process, and I'm not certain who made these, who made these changes, if these were, I don't recall these being NCSBA. I brought the last with me.
Has it changed since the printed material? But the data that's on the computer is also the same as the printed. Thank you.
So I had pulled this back into policy in the December meeting because there was a change in twenty-one, I believe, that did no longer required parental consent, it required an opt-out if you wish. And it became, from a parent's side of things, a kind of like a gotcha effect, and I don't think that was the intent behind the policy. But with some different surveys that had gone out, there was concerns that parents had shared, that they had told their child they did not want to participate, but then they were told by staff that they had to participate and lack thereof. And so I would just rather have very good communication with our staff and our families when we are surveying our students in any level of state level, district level, district piloted programs, that we are indeed getting the consent of our parents because this should not be something that gets presented and kind of passed through of changes that we're doing in the school system. And so I, and I will do better with my notations of color notations as we move forward because, like I said, whenever I was changing, and some of them came up in color, some of them were blue, some of them were red, some of them didn't have color. So moving forward, it'll hopefully be a little bit easier to understand. So initially, this had been struck through, the school system must obtain prior written consent of parent or eligible student before the student is required to participate in any Department of Education-funded survey, analysis, or evaluation that reveals the protected topics. And I believe I'd like to potentially include any state, district, or district piloted program because there were some schools that participated and school-wide... program because there were some schools that participated in school-wide surveys, and there was a couple of pilot schools that participated in surveys for a variety of things. I know we had participated in the tobacco state survey, we had a Title IX survey given, we've had, you know, social emotional learning development surveys that were given at some piloted schools. And so, I would like to see this policy be adopted and drafted to provide consistency for any format of surveys given to students, as well as the material that we get consent from our parents. And with that, I'll open it up for concerns and justifications for why we changed that, and potentially.
Are you looking for that from staff?
So, letter A, you are, number one, you are saying that you're not striking it out now?
This, that, this is the, initially, when this came to the board in December, that had been struck out, I believe. And so, I would like to maintain that, to stay in, to allow consent from parents to be given.
Look for the one with color.
I've got, yeah, I guess I'm going to have to go back to the Crystal's new policy, new one.
Yeah.
Because the one I'm looking at, that I pulled offline, doesn't have that struck out.
This, this is the one that's online?
Not on Friday, when I made my copies. So, that is, let me, let me go look in what the, what Ms. Dewey just made for us.
Okay.
Madam Chair, while we wait, having multiple children in school, and things come home, they never make it home, things come by email, your email's down that day, I really like this, I'm, I'm, I'm a fan of opt-in, so, written consent would help me get closer to that goal, so I'm in support of it.
Well, if you look at let, number two, letter C, the last, the second paragraph, the last words are, "Given the opportunity to opt out."
Those are very different. I, I mean, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention because I looked over this, these are very different interpretations because the ability to opt out means, from the parent's side of things, if you catch the survey beforehand, then you have the ability to say yes or no, to evaluate what survey is being given. And I will share a personal frustration experience that I had in my own school when I got a phone call, part of our weekly call, saying that our students were surveyed. So, then I asked to see the survey, and I was told the only way to see the survey is if you came in person, Ms. Barnhart. So, I did that, and I procedurally went through. Come to find out, on the bottom of the survey, it said, "For demonstration purposes only." That translates to me, as a parent, this is not necessarily the questions that our students are being asked. That's a concern for me as a parent, and now, as a board member, that what we are sharing with our parents is consistent. Where, where the information is going, who's getting the information is important. And so, while there is an ability, yes, to parent, to operate that right to opt out, there has been no documentation for parents who want that choice to opt out, so that when the child goes to school and tells the teacher, "I am told not to participate," and the teacher says, "Well, this is what you have to do," they have clear documentation that has not been processed. But also, it's only if the parent catches it. And so, this is where I have a very hard time moving forward with this policy because after I asked lots and lots and lots of questions about where the survey material was going, what we were doing, and the changes we were doing with the programs, it was very vague answers. And again, I have concerns with that, and as a school system, when we are doing things, I think that we should be very transparent and open about the process and procedures in place. And so, yes, there is a caveat, opt-out if you wish, I just think it would be better to have written consent. And if, it needs to be electronic and written consent, or both, or however that looks like, but I think written consent is the way to go when we're surveying our students. And if it is not that important to get it, then I don't know if it's important to, to do it.
So, I am still confused on the different kind, the, on what I'm reading here, like, the, can you define, like, restate that first paragraph, A1, the first line, that it, whatever's written there, doesn't make sense?
This is, this was just the old policy prior to adoption. So, it says, "For purposes," and it's the same as that, "As the policy, the following are considered, a school system must obtain prior written consent."
Considered, uh, uh, the?
Committee members, if it helps, this is Jason Weber. So, so if I'm following the conversation, the red text was previously deleted as part of an earlier policy committee meeting.
Well, still doesn't make sense.
Replaced with the blue, underlined text, and Ms. Barnhart is proposing to reinsert the red text. And, and just to give some more context, so, this, this policy tracks a School Boards Association model that was reorganized somewhat recently. I can't remember if it was in the summer or the fall. So, this concept of prior written consent before participating in any Department of Education-funded survey analysis or evaluation concerning protected topics, that language was essentially moved, so it was deleted here in the School Boards Association model, and it was moved down to the second page of first paragraph under C.
So, should, should, number one, read, should, "For the purposes of this policy, the following are to be considered, A," should we strike that out and just start with the "School system must?"
Well, if you were to do that, you would need to revert back to the version prior to the School Boards Association update from the spring. So, they, they reorganized this policy. So, this concept, right, so this requirement that prior written consent must be obtained in any Department of Ed-funded survey concerning protected topics, that wasn't removed from the policy, it was just moved to a new section down in B, or down in C, the first paragraph on page two. If you look at that blue text, it says, "Before a student is required to participate," scroll up a little bit, where it says, "Before, C, parental consent, before a student is required to participate in any Department of Ed-funded survey analysis evaluation concerning protected topic, the parent or eligible student must provide prior written consent." So, it's, so again, the association was just reorganizing its policy. So, now, it starts with the list of protected topics in that first section, A, and then down here in section C, it states the consent requirement. And then, the second, the second paragraph here refers to non-Department of Ed-funded surveys, where there's the opt-out, if it's not funded by the Department of Ed, but there's still prior written consent required if it is funded by, essentially, the feds.
So-
So, just, just to give some context to the, the changes, that's my understanding, is all this blue text is from the School Boards Association updates.
Right, and so, that, that was my, that was my understanding as well. I'm just trying to figure out, that first sentence, it is, it, it just is not reading right. "For purposes of this policy, the following are considered, A, the school system must," yeah, so, we need to strike out the, the stuff that was struck out, and so that we get to, A, "Considered protective topics."
So, yeah, strike that out, okay, I see what you're saying.
Because-
So, to read that first part-
And it's, again, just tracking all the School Boards Association changes can be difficult, so they weren't, they weren't striking this concept, this is required by federal law, there has to be prior written consent, they just moved it.
Right.
So, you're saying to, "For purposes of this policy, the following are considered protected topics."
Are considered protected, yeah.
So, not A.
I think it should be, or as, you know, as protective topics. That A should be as.
You don't even need the A, "Considered protected topics" would work.
Then let's take the whole thing out.
So, and to do that, okay.
So, isn't that the same with the protection of student privacy that just got moved to a different section as well?
Well, I, I mean, ju-
I am so confused.
So, Mike, I'll tell you where, to make sure, so I can help guide. Protected topics under A1, those we always have to get, we've already been getting parent permission. So, anything under A through H, we can't do that survey unless we get parent parental consent. Under, um, surveys involving protected items, let me make sure, hold on, under parent consent, is it C, is that the one that we want to look at? Because this one already does, I think, what you wanted it to do. It's-
It's, so, BC, the second paragraph, or, little C.
Yes.
Section two, little C.
Yes.
If prior written consent is not mandated for a survey, rather than saying if it's not mandated, just to say to all, for all surveys to be mandated.
That's one, make sure we're not undoing-
Okay.
-what you want us to do.
So, where is that again, Josie?
Um, page two of four, little C.
Number two, little C.
So, all, we can just change it to "All surveys administered"?
And is that what we really want, is that all surveys administered? Because you know that opting in and opting out can significantly change the data that you're going to get, and it could unintentionally skew it one way or the other based on who opts in-
Who wants to opt in, yeah.
And who opts out. So, I, I would be very hesitant to say for every survey that, we're going to get-
Protect the child.
The, um, what protection are we trying to, what, what are you trying to protect, Pat?
I'm trying to protect-
A person saying a word you don't want them to hear?
Well, I'm, I'm, I just, let's be respectful of the opinions.
No, I don't understand what we're trying to protect.
We're trying to protect the parent's right to say which survey their child should or should not participate in, period.
Right, and, and so, I understand that, and I'm with that. I had parents, I had kids in school. But what I'm saying to us is, if we just carte blanche say that, then we are, you, we almost might not even do the survey at all because who opts in and who opts out is, it could skew the data that we're trying to collect and analyze to make programs that will improve the educational experience for our children. That's all I'm saying, is if, if we carte blanche it, then we're really cutting off our nose to spite our face, I, in my opinion.
And so, my add to that is, when I was teaching in the classroom and I needed buy-in of parents, I was the one on the phone calling them up and telling them the importance of why I needed their participation. And so, while I respect and understand where you're coming from, I guess my question would be, if we have a survey that is going out, that is so necessary in order to make the appropriate academic changes that's going to support our students, then I think that we should be intentionally involving our parents to include them of, this is what it is, this is why it's important, this is what we're going to do with it. And respectfully, I think that we could do better in that process as a school district. And so, that's, that's where I stand on it. I do, I, I'm, I'm trying to kind of add the verbiage of just saying, "All students administered will require prior written consent."
So, we're leaving in the, your proposal is to leave the language in exactly as in A.
No, you, we, yeah, looking at, looking at C, I, I would like to change it, yes, as-
Can you read which one you want to change it to?
Uh, I have to, I'm, right, scratch, scribble right now, huh?
While you're working on that, Mr. Cortan, could you describe to us, like, how hard it is to get parents to respond to surveys, you know, or get permission slips back in for stuff? I mean, is this hard, or, or not hard, I don't know, maybe, I'm, I'm not a principal, so I don't know.
It, it can be challenging at times, it just depends on if the parents are, I mean, we have several ways of communicating with them, we have the all-call that goes out, things like that, it just, it, for, for some parents, it is challenging to get a response back from them because, you know, they, they'll turn off their all-call, or they'll, the emails and things like that, or paper. There are some students that, unfortunately, they don't look through their stuff as, as often as they should. So, I, like I said, we have several ways to communicate, it just depends on the parent responding back.
But if we would require written, then we would have to get the paper back, and even, like, your, your-
Correct.
-teachers would have to call parents and say, "Turn this for me."
Or, if, it, would it be more feasible to include a plethora of ways of getting that, getting that feedback and consent from parents? Are you saying, like, utilizing electronic, I don't, you know, electronic signature of sorts, or, or whatnot? Is that what you're saying, to utilize multiple ways to get that feedback? I mean, I, I support having multiple ways that we support and communicate with our parents, but with the consensus of that we're going to be getting their permission.
In all honesty, in my opinion, I would think that the written would be the best way because if you start having to try to track all these kinds of different ways for this to come in to have permission, that could be very time-consuming for people to try to keep track of-
Track different ways.
Every which way a student has been given permission or not given permission to take a survey. So, I would, I would say, honestly, you would want that written, if that's what you guys are looking at, you would want that written documentation so that we can have it on hand. Just my opinion.
And, and we would need for a kid not to come into school and say, "Mom said, don't take this." We would need a, a note, like a-
Which is currently what's happening now, "Mom said, don't take it," and then, hope, hope for the best.
I would also say, if you don't get the permission slip back, then that student doesn't take the survey.
Okay.
Is, normally, how we would do something like that, when it involves written permission. I mean, we try to call and stuff, but if we just don't get it back, we don't get it back.
Yep, thank you for that effort, I know it's monumental, you know, in some cases.
So, I guess the language change in little C, paragraph two, that I would like to see happen would be, "All surveys administered at a district or district pilot level will require prior written consent from parents."
In letter C, so you're changing, like, the whole thing?
Are you changing paragraph one or paragraph two?
Paragraph two.
The one that says, right now, "If prior written consent is not mandated?"
Yes.
So, you're, now, so tell me again what you're changing that wording to be?
I would like it to say it's something of the kind, so, "All surveys administered at a district or district piloted, um, level will require prior written consent from parents."
Do you need a second? Will be there.
No, we, we don't have to do seconds, we just, we-
Just keep going through.
We just keep going.
And I'm just going to keep moving on from this one.
One second.
Third-party surveys?
No, the, in, um, in letter A, number two, B, um, where it says, the, the struck-out lines that are not funded in whole or in part by the Department of Education, is, is that what we want to leave in there? Because I, I thought the, what we were, we were supposed to do was to make our list of the protected topics, the ones that are funded by the Department of Education, and the rest of them, we do our best to get the information out as quickly as possible on when we, when we would like to do a survey. So, is, is that a good line to, I have it struck out in two different, in, in all of our different policies, I'm just wondering if that, does that make sense, Ms. Barnum? That, um, striking that out?
Yeah, I, I think I'm trying to understand, so, if, if we're saying, if, if the board is saying, or the committee is saying that, that you want parent permission provided, so opting in for all surveys, then I think it doesn't necessarily matter that we split that out after whether they're protected topics or not.
Mm-hmm.
Because if you, if you're seeking full parental consent, uh- Because if you, if you're seeking full parental consent opt-in, you don't really need to, to, the reason they were separated is, is because of opt-in or out.
Okay, so that line is, is okay to be, to be struck out?
And you're back to the one in B.
Yes, in, yes.
Yes, this is, this is Jason. So, that strikeout is consistent with the.
Okay.
P P R A. The notice requirement is, the notice provision is required regardless of the funding source. Where the P P R A gives discretion is around opt-in versus opt-out. And if it's funded by the Department of Ed, prior written consent is required. If the survey is not funded by the Department of Ed, then parents should be given the opportunity to opt-out. And what the committee is considering is introducing a prior written consent requirement, no matter what the funding source is.
Okay. My, my other, my, my last point or question is, I am not certain how advertising in schools policy fifty-two forty fits in with this. I mean, I, I read it, and there is language in there that talks about sexual orientation and gender identity, but I'm not quite certain, I mean, it, it's referenced, you know, in letter D, and it's also cross-referenced, you know, so it was intentional on that. So, I'm just wondering, why is, why is this policy advertising in schools, the, relevant? Other than the, the one where it says we can't use third-party people, we can't survey our students for third-party marketing purposes? Is that the only reason?
Well, well, it, to the extent that it helps, this policy, whatever this number is, surveys of students.
Forty-seven twenty.
Four, sorry, forty-seven twenty. I mean, it's really, again, it's based on a School Boards Association model that essentially restates the requirements in the P P R A, the Protection of People Rights Amendment. So, that, that is the law that governs and, and, and that's behind essentially the, you know, every provision in here. The advertising in schools policy might incorporate or be based on some aspects of the P P R A, but it's intended to be a little more broad than just surveys and the restrictions around those surveys under federal law. So, that might be why there's a difference between the two.
I'm just having a hard time figuring out why, why they're really related, but that's not what we're here to talk about. That, that's so inconsequential in this, in the, in the bigger scheme of things.
I'm.
Do you know?
Well, the only thing, the only thing that I see that connects them is really about that protection of student privacy. So, and, and it's saying that no school system, and I'm looking in fifty.
Fifty-two forty.
Fifty-two forty.
Yes, I'm looking on.
Yeah, that no employee is going to require, shall require students to provide marketing information, but it goes so far as to say including their personal information, which then would be confidential or protection of student privacy. So, I think it relates in that way, because it could be seen as a survey. So, I think it's just another layer we put.
Okay.
Are there any other comments for this policy before moving forward?
So, are we moving it forward with the changes of just what we've seen? Or are we moving it forward, are there any other things we need to get clarity on the words?
I think I'm comfortable moving it forward. I know that we're coming up towards the end time, so I will move that we discuss the counseling policy to our next meeting, because I know that's going to have a lot of questions. And I looked at, looking at the next few, I know there were some that you wanted to get to, Ms. Crable, so I'd like to, if the committee's okay with it, to be able to discuss those.
Well, the only thing is that we, we've approved the agenda, so we have to.
I'm saying to.
We have to vote to take it off.
Okay.
Or, yeah, because you don't really table it to the next meeting, you just.
There, there could just be a motion to postpone discussion of thirty-six-ten until the next meeting.
That's what I'm going with. So, I, I make a motion to postpone the discussion of the counseling program thirty-six-ten to our February meeting.
Second?
Okay. And Ms. Crable, I'll let you take, oh.
All in favor?
All in favor, aye. And I will, I'm going to write my note.
I would say let's go ahead and do the same thing with the, I'd like to make a motion that we do twenty-two-thirty to the next meeting also, so that we can get to the other two.
There is one language change I would like for us to discuss kind of now, and the reason is specifically in regards to the Legislative Committee. In number five, the second paragraph, it says the committee, and I, I crossed it off, because it says the committee will be comprised of three board members, preferably at least from multiple sites. And I changed that to be added, and I'm going to tell you guys the reason. Because we have to trigger an open meeting, and in this case, if there's three of us named, anytime two of us would meet with an elected official, it would trigger an open meeting law. And so, I would like for it to be written here that we'd have a liaison between the Board of Education, but the committee would be all of the board members, such that it would allow for more flexibility for more of us to have a conversation together versus otherwise how it's, how it's now essentially one-on-one conversation, or the other four unnamed committee members can have a one-on-one conversation with elected officials.
So, what you just said is not what you wrote, the, as far as that goes. There, it doesn't, because it doesn't say anything about a liaison.
It does, right here in the first paragraph, the purpose of this committee is serving.
Between the Board of Education, okay, so we need to have, the, the committee is, is serving as a liaison.
Correct.
And so, why are we, we had the same discussion when we were talking about Budget Committee versus Finance Committee. The Budget Committee had everybody on it, and we decided that we didn't need a committee of a whole, because that's our job. So, it, it sounds to me like you're proposing that we don't have a legislative committee, that we have a liaison, the, just, just one person as a liaison which we can appoint. That if the committee is comprised of all board members, preferable multiple parties, the, I, I don't even think we need the multiple parties, because there's only two. And, and we, we may not even have.
Correct.
That, it's not an issue if the whole board is comprised of one party. So, we don't really need those words. So, I, I, I think what you're trying to say is, we don't need a legislative committee.
I think.
That's what, that's, that's how I'm interpreting what you're trying to say, is that we want to make this as open as possible to meeting with our elected officials, so.
I think the intent behind.
Take it away as a committee.
But I, I think the intent behind creating the committee was so that we could have cross-collaboration. And the reason why the chair appointed the three who did is, we are very passionate about that. The, the problem has become that if we're going to work together and have some open conversations, I know with building relationships, I mean, they operate on a board much like we do. So, when you're having a one-on-one conversation with a, with a legislative official, their word isn't the gold standard. They have to present and convince people, just like we have to do to have buy-in to the decisions that we make. And so, I just felt like this was an opportunity for us to be able to openly collaborate with more of our board members, if we didn't have this, you know, three committee members. I, I don't know, Ms. Bradford, if you have suggestions on that? I mean, again, we can, we, we can table this discussion, I just, that was a big thing that I was discussing and thinking about.
I agree, it's a challenge. If the two of us want to get together with elected officials, we have to be concerned about the open meetings law. It's going to be harder to get things done. That does make sense to me. And I want to do anything that I can do to facilitate that. The more we engage the other elected officials, the more smoothly everything's going to run, and we're going to get to the point we need to get to faster.
So, do you think that it would be better to have a legislative liaison and not have a named committee? I know this is kind of a new committee, so coming into this role.
We, we haven't really put it into action.
That's what.
But by, by making the committee bigger, all you're doing is just opening up even further that we have to have an open meeting.
No, once you trigger four of us together.
She's saying with a, a committee of three, two-thirds is two people.
No, I understand that, but see, but the, the, and Jason, help me, I'm going to try my best with the words, and you help me if, if I need to. That if a committee is acting, appears to be acting on behalf of the board by having a committee, then we're not, that, we're not allowed to do that either. We're not allowed to send some people into battle to, you know, to do the work, and then, and call it a committee, when essentially, if it's all of us and we're there, then we're having, we're making board decisions at a committee meeting. Jason, and, and am I, am I muddling? I mean, I'm just trying not to have a.
So, so, so I think, so if the, so if a committee is comprised of all board members, it is essentially just the board.
Right.
So, if the board wanted to meet and discuss legislative issues, and only legislative issues, the board can already do that by holding a special meeting for that purpose, without it being called a committee. And it sounds like there used to be a Budget Committee that was comprised of all board members that you've since removed, because, you know, for that same reason, it's essentially just a board meeting. So, to that, I mean, that could be one outcome of this discussion. If, you know, if this committee wants to recommend removing the Legislative Committee from this policy, and to instead, I mean, the, the chair, for example, could designate an individual as a liaison to local legislators, or you could replace this with some sort of language, requiring that there be a, be a liaison, and those could also be options to consider.
And it doesn't replace Policy twenty-six-fifty liaison with the School Board Association, because that's a policy we already have to have. We just sort of included that in here, so that we got all of our legislative stuff in the same place. So, that, we already do appoint one person to be that legislative liaison. And in our, in this new policy, the, the chair did not say who that person was. So, we would have to do a little bit of just changing of that. So, what I'm hearing is that we don't, that, I think what I'm hearing is that you don't want to have a legislative committee, because if it's a committee of a whole, then we don't need one, because that's what we do. And we're all allowed to talk to our legislative people at any time that we want, and we, and in fact, that's part of our responsibility, and that doesn't stop us from coming back and making a report during a board meeting. This is what I found out.
And board, and committee members, if it helps, I mean, if this is something that's not necessarily urgent, I'd be happy to look into it further. I, I hear open meetings law issues and concerns, and I'd be happy to study those and report back. If, if at least for now, you want to leave this language in place, and then revisit it later. But obviously, that's up to you.
I mean, we can move to table this discussion to the February meeting. I know that you wanted to discuss the personnel file, so I want to try to do that with before we close. But that was my concern moving forward, because I know when we have conversations, to trigger an open meeting makes it more difficult, so I'll, I'll just, I'll just continue some little conversation. It's fine, that's the time being.
So, we, we are just postponing, not keeping it in committee?
So, I make a motion to postpone, no, I make a motion to postpone further discussion, because I know Mr. Wildwater wanted to talk about a potential streamlining process, but I want to meet with the committee chairs to talk about what the needs are in the public-facing positions, and how that comes about prior to me suggesting a process. So, I'm going to make a motion to discuss this at a later, I can say, the February meeting, the February meeting. Second, all in favor?
A February Policy Committee meeting.
Yes. Aye, ma'am, aye. Okay. And Ms. Crable, I'll let you lead the personnel file conversation.
Yes, so, my, my suggested changes are in section D, number two, Little B. And that is, my pages weren't numbered on there. Ms. Billy, do you have to, oh, thank you. It is, looks like one, two, three, like maybe on the fourth page.
Okay.
And so, it's, it's right there, B, it's not highlighted, but on, on our handouts it is, where it says, "The Board of Education, while sitting as a whole during a properly convened closed session, if the examination of the files relate to the duties and responsibilities of the school board." So, and that is to be, to change, that any members can come in whenever they want and ask to see a personnel file.
Ms. Bradford?
Is there something specific that this triggered, or?
Yes.
Is that something?
It's a specific incident, yes.
Is that something?
Closed session, open meeting.
Okay.
But it needs to happen, because it means that any one of, the way it is right now, any one of us could go in to Dr. Barnes' office and ask to see a personnel file. And, and for what, and why? And not tell the rest of the board members that they've done that.
Would this, would this, that's what I was going to ask, Ms. Crable, would this apply? So, if I, if I was a member who was saying that, and I was granted permission, would we then, the fellow board members, be notified of?
Don't have to, according to this policy, you don't have to at all.
The way it is now.
Can we add that caveat in there, if a board member does get granted access to a personnel file, that, that the rest of the board will be made aware of that?
My whole thought process is, why would one person go in to look at a teacher or an administrator or a central office staff? Why would they go in and not tell other board members that they're doing? I mean.
Well, that's what, I, I think we're getting at the same conclusion.
I don't even want to be told, I want to be part of it, because I want to, I want to hear the questions that you are asking. And then also, I would think that we would want to make sure that it relates to the duties and responsibilities of a board member, and not just rando, I'm interested.
So, it, it would slow the process down, which is not necessarily bad or good. I'm just looking around the corner at the unattending consequences. Let's say a board member had something that was burning, and they asked for permission, and we were all notified, and then, but other than that, this says we're going to wait for a closed, a convened closed session. So, we would then have to call a special closed session in order to do that?
Yeah, and we're going to be talking about that in the next Policy twenty-three-oh-two. And so, my, my thoughts on that are, if you have a burning issue, then the superintendent's sitting right there. And so, it should be discussed with him. And, and at least, if a board member has something, it should be discussed with the board chair, who would then discuss it with the superintendent. And it's not just two of us going, hey, I've heard blah, 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 let's go in and check it out for ourselves. The, that just is counterproductive to the work that we do, because we don't hire and fire employees. We don't make personnel recommendations, you know, at all. So, that's where I think that there needs to be, and I, I'll say more, you know, we can put more wording in it, but I just think this wording is pretty simple.
Dr. Barnes, can you chime in on this, please?
I can.
Sorry?
So, yeah, so, we go back to core training. Remember the example of the, the board member who was following the bus driver?
Yeah.
Did the own investigation, that's actually what this is. So, if a board member is doing their own investigation, technically, you say, hey, I have an issue. I'll bring it, and then I bring it to everyone, and bring the file to them, because that's what technically happens. They're not actually housed in his office there, in the building, and I can go get the file.
So, this is the board member following the bus driver explanation?
It makes sense, thanks. So, Ms. Crable, would you be open if we edited to say during a properly convened or intentionally-called closed session?
And typically, in your closed session, when it has personnel, because all of your closed sessions will have personnel matters, then that's when we discuss personnel matters.
I just wonder if we put that caveat, or intentionally-called, that leaves us the flexibility? If there is some dying issue and, you know, not waiting two weeks to have a closed session, I'm.
Because that's what a properly convened closed session is, you call the meeting. And, and you notice it in a forty-eight hours.
Okay.
This, to the extent that it helps, this language would allow the board to meet in a special called meeting with forty-eight hours' notice, or to have the closed session during a regularly scheduled meeting.
I'd be okay with that.
I'm good.
So I'm okay to move this forward to the board at the February meeting?
Okay, thank you.
Do we need a vote?
Uh, oh, yeah.
Second?
No. Okay, so then the next one is Policy twenty-three-oh-two, that, bringing that forward for us, if we look at section B, two, A. And
Right here, wholly remote meetings.
So it used to say, "The board will not hold wholly remote meetings in the absence of a state or locally declared emergency," which means that we have to have an in-person meeting at all times.
Correct.
And what I am suggesting is that we allow the, what it says, "While meetings where board members are physically present, remains the board's preference, the board may conduct wholly remote meetings in exigent circumstances for regularly scheduled board meetings, or as otherwise determined by the board chair and superintendent, for other types of meetings, such as special meeting, in compliance with open meeting laws." And really, all that is saying is that if we need to convene, you know, quickly, to get something resolved with proper noticing of meetings, you know, forty-eight hours and posting it, et cetera, et cetera, then we can get on Zoom and have that meeting.
The only, it's regular scheduled board meetings, that would include, you know, our call to audience time, that's the only caveat with this, I
No, I think, I don't think it means, and maybe I worded it improperly.
It does say regularly.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be the regular. It means little r.
Or if you're out of town.
Yes.
Technically, if you're out of town right now, I think you have to get permission to get, then that would support you, the opportunity.
And I think there was another policy, when I was looking through, that references how many remote meetings as a board member we're allowed to participate, so I think we'll have to
Three.
Yeah, I think we'll have to look at that too and reevaluate as well, but
This did change, this did change
Yes.
To this in the last year, if my memory serves me right, correct? It tightened up. After COVID, it tightened up to what this is now. And the reason for going back is what?
So for instance, if we have to have a meeting
With a single agenda item?
With a single agenda item, you don't have to, everyone call, you may be in different spots and say, okay.
Okay. Does it say single agenda item in it?
It, my motion did not say that, but Jason, you know, help me out with wording, I mean, I am
Sometimes maybe two or three.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't think we need to limit it to single, because there may be
I'm just trying not to do the whole board meeting and mess up the call to audience, and that, it'll appear to the public that we're trying to avoid.
No, see what it says?
Right. And this sets up two different
Yes.
Two different standards. So to give some context, so pre-COVID, the open meetings law allowed for electronic meetings. During COVID, there was a new law passed with special rules for virtual remote meetings of an entire, you know, where the entire board is remote during a state of emergency. Those rules only apply during a state of emergency. The, your old policy only allowed holding remote meetings, which means everyone, every single board member is remote, if there's a state of emergency. What this does is it still gives you the flexibility that you already had under the open meetings law, and it sets up two different standards, to your point, with regularly scheduled meetings, this still requires that there be exigent circumstances, for example, a hurricane, right? And then it's other meetings where the board chair and the superintendent get to consult and make a decision as to having a holding remote meeting, for example, to discuss the school calendar, or, you know, any, any one or two or three different items. So it's still, it still protects regularly scheduled board meetings and creates a higher standard for those, but instead of tying it to a state of emergency, it ties it to exigent circumstances.
I'm good. I'm okay with this, that language change as well.
And if you see, you notice it's regularly little r, you know, not the regular meeting.
I'm okay with this changes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to move this forward to the board meeting in February for consensus?
Okay. So Ms. Barnhart, I'd like to make the motion that we move Policy thirty-three-hundred, thirty-six twenty, forty-seven twenty, seventy-eight twenty, and twenty-three-oh-two to the, onto the entire board at the February meeting.
For consensus?
For consensus.
Aye, second, okay. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No opposed. And so then, for the policy amendments, for the sake of time, I'm going to move that we discuss this at a later date, and then we can put it on our February policy meeting for the minor adjustments.
Yeah.
And then I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Are we, and also make a motion to, to also postpone amendments from the NCSBA, because they are also on the agenda.
That's, yeah, that's what, that's what I was, yeah. Policy amendments from the NCSBA to move to February policy meeting.
Do I have a second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now adjourned. Make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right. All in favor?
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second.
And we are adjourned. Thank you guys for your time.